Welcome, everyone, tonight to the grand proceedings of the Grand Rapids Board of Education. Tonight is Tuesday, January 22nd. Will you please rise for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the fire of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Support. All in favor?
Aye.
Ho, same sign. We have an agenda. Right, our first on the agenda is our celebrations, our holiday cards. Yes. Oh, I should first say, our superintendent is not here tonight. She was in DC for the inauguration, so we have Ms. Evans standing in her place. Thank you, Ms. Evans.
And thank you so much for the honor. I'd like to begin by asking Mr. Brian Gamm to come forth, and he will introduce each school and the winners of the holiday card artist, the artists that are the winners for that competition. And we are, we have one, we have three schools, I'm sorry for being so nervous, I'll do better. We have three schools, I believe, and I, if you ask them to come up individually, I will be happy to hold up the artwork.
Oh, right, thank you. Ms. Evans, Dr. Fahl, forward. It is a great pleasure tonight for me to announce the district art award winners for our holiday cards. Each season, our district art teachers are asked, with their students, to develop cards to be used for the district's holiday cards. We were very honored to have three fine representatives from Coit Creative Arts Academy. We have Aiden Conrad, his, the art teacher is Karen Brady, and Aiden is in attendance with his family. So Aiden wants to come down. From Martin Luther King Academy, we have Shamaya Smith, and the art teacher is Leslie Sharuff. And, of course, as the principal, there's Tricia Matthews. If Shamaya's in attendance, Shamaya, if you want to come down.
You can stand over here and shaking hands.
And then I'm not sure if this third student is here, Palmer Elementary. Is Logan here? Logan?
Congratulations.
Want to come on down, buddy? Logan Vance from Palmer, the art teacher, Mary Giede.
Congratulations.
Go ahead and take your pieces, boys and girls.
Very nice.
Parents are here. We also would like to extend gratitude to Aberdeen Elementary, Burton Elementary, East Leonard, and Mulek for submitted beautiful artwork.
I want to come up closer.
What's that? Oh, the parents for the picture. My secretaries reminded me that we did not call the roll, so we need to call the roll here.
Lanier, not here. Moody?
Here.
O'Connor?
Here.
Randles?
Present.
Ross, present.
Slate?
Present.
Baker?
Yes.
LaGrand?
Yes.
President Fahl?
Present.
We do have a crown. Thank you.
Thank you. Right, our second celebration is from the Kiwanis of Grand Rapids. This is, this is a tradition we look forward to every year.
Hello again. So, once again, representing the elementary division, and I was, it's an honor to introduce the Kiwanis Club and their work around supporting our third grade students. I benefited as a teacher, as a principal, and now as executive director, it's an honor to introduce an organization that has supported Grand Rapids. I would like to, at this time, to call Mr. Pete Satterway, Kiwanis of Grand Rapids, former GRPS teacher, President Keith Bovey, the Golden K Kiwanis Club of Grand Rapids, president, Stephanie Hosford from the North Kiwanis Club, as well as President Lisa Tate from GVSU. They could please call up, please.
Good evening.
It's a great pleasure to represent the Kiwanis Cubs of Grand Rapids. We have presented or are presenting dictionaries to every third grader. You have them on your desk. You might notice that it's more than a dictionary, and we find from the thank you letters that kids send back, they spend more time in the back than they do with the words. They love the encyclopedia-type information that's available to them. This is a Kiwanis project for the whole community, and every third grader will get a dictionary. For many of them, it may be the only book they own, but it's theirs. They can take it home and use it, and we're just proud to present it to you as a school board. Thank you.
Thank you.
Doctor, if I may pick up the books to go to the students?
Absolutely. Absolutely.
I was about to sneak off.
You get to keep yours.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for your work.
Thank you.
For all you do, really, very much.
I think it's done.
So next on our agenda is a report from our student representative. Do you have anything for us this evening? Okay, thank you.
Welcome.
Public comment for board agenda items.
We do have a card. Louise Wilson, please.
It's a non-agenda item?
Okay, excuse me.
Okay, well, then, at the end of the meeting, thank you. All right, report, secretary's report.
Just a acknowledgement of the couple of Giants awards coming from GRPS. The Giants ceremony is being held Saturday, the 26th, at DeVos Place, and our own superintendent, Ms. Teresa Wether Arneil, will be honored with the William Glenn Terrell Blazer Award, as well as one of our very own school social workers, Mary Harden Johnson, should be recognized with the Phyllis Scott Activist Award. And again, that's Saturday, January 26th, at DeVos Place.
Thank you, Reena. Ms. Evans?
Thank you. At this time, we'd like to meet a friend of the district. I'm going to ask that John Helmholdt and Chris Larson, Director of the Downtown Development Authority, if they'd come forward.
Well, thank you all for, for having me down here, members of the board, Ms. Evans. It's an honor and privilege for me to introduce one of Grand Rapids' newest additions, not so new, it's been a couple months now, but Chris, as many of you may have followed, the Grand Rapids Downtown Development Authority, one of their, his predecessor retired, and just recently, we were able to snag him from California, and so I know that part of his Getting to Know Grand Rapids tour, among other things, was asked to come before the board to make introductions and paint a picture a little bit about the Downtown Development Authority, so I'll keep it short and just turn it over to Chris.
Thank you very much, John. In terms of Getting to Know Grand Rapids, I think that my cold, wet, soggy feet right now tell me more than I, than I ask to learn about the community. However, I am incredibly honored to be here and to talk to you this evening, and I will try to keep this as brief as possible, but I want to let you know a little bit about what the Downtown Development Authority is doing for the downtown of this community, and to explore potential partnerships that might exist between the school district as well as, as the downtown. And I, myself, I'm a product of a, a county school system in Wake County of North Carolina, one of the earliest counties to experiment with busing, and I was a, I think, a prodigal son of sorts for that school district, in so much that I was shipped all the way across town to go to the best schools in the city, and I learned not only just diversity, but an appreciation for the complexity that is cities and the educational system. And I come back now with an appreciation for the complexities that you all face as a school board in, in examining policy decision-making, as well as the role that education plays in the future of our community. As the new executive director for the Downtown Development Authority, I've had about six months so far to get to know this community, and I can talk to you real quickly about a few of our initial priorities. And the first is really opening the way that we do business, and that means providing an opportunity for participation for various members of this community whom are interested in the future of our downtown, and that future has many different layers to it, much as an onion. There are many different components that help to dictate the future of the core of our community, and as our new executive director, I'm interested in partnering with you to explore more of those opportunities as we move forward. But we began by really improving the communications of, of the organization to help to translate what we're up to and to provide opportunities for people to participate, and that's a, a part of the backbone of the organization, is to really sincerely engage the human beings, the citizens of this community, and the decision-making that we are forced to, to decide upon. Little things like the color of the blue bridge to big things about the future of our downtown, these are all opportunities for constituencies such as GRPS, as well as the larger community, to engage in, and it's my job to ensure that everybody has that opportunity. And lastly, it's, it's to talk about this, this moving towards an income orientation, and there's a, I think there's a tendency for people to focus on things like inputs and outputs as it relates to decision-making, and really, what I'm concerned with is outcomes. How are we using the dollars and resources that the DDA is able to capture to be able to create better outcomes for the community as a whole? And I'm using this opportunity tonight, and I appreciate the opportunity amongst all of you, including Dr. Fahl, who will soon be a member of our Board of Directors, which I'm very excited for your participation moving forward. But I'm, I'm using this opportunity to really create that invitation, that it's going to take partnership, and it's going to take strategic initiatives to identify those outcomes for us to work together to better the outcomes of this community, and education is a core component to that. As a product of the Wake County Schools, School District in the state of North Carolina, I feel like I can look back upon that and say, that was one of the best decisions my parents ever made. They gave me a great education, and it's given me a great opportunity to be successful in my career and to stand before you now, and I hope that every child in this city has a similar opportunity moving forward, and so I look forward to those opportunities to partner, because education is not an individual responsibility. It's not something that parents have to make for their child, and I believe this to my bone. It's something that we, as a community, make for ourselves as a community, and we need to be looking at the bigger picture and the role that education plays as a public good. Thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you very much. Will you stay for some questions, if you have?
Sure, absolutely.
Really appreciate your sentiments. Questions for Mr. Larson. Mr. LaGrand?
Have you thought about ways that you can actually prioritize projects downtown that might impact people who are in the median income and lower in our community, rather than simply the upper echelons that might, might consume downtown naturally more the way it's constituted? Specifically, what I'm wondering is, have you given any thought to real support for Grand Rapids Community College as opposed to, say, the Whitewater Rafton Community?
Well, there's probably elements of the overall funding mechanism. Grand Rapids Community College has opted out of a number of our different financing mechanisms in the downtown, so those are tax dollars that we don't necessarily capture or control the fate of, so it's, it's not necessarily as though we determine their future, but we are always interested in new partnerships, and quite frankly, the downtown is a city for everyone, and we're always looking in, in terms of expanding that opportunity and really figuring out what that means for a much larger and diverse constituency.
Questions for Mr. Larson?
Yes, you said that you had the opportunity to travel and, and attend various schools. Did I hear that correctly?
I went to Wake County Public Schools as a child, which meant that I traveled on a daily basis, about an hour and 15 minutes on average every day, getting up before dawn to get on a bus, to be shipped across school, to go to the best city in the school, which happened to be in downtown Raleigh.
And that was a public school?
That was a public school.
Then you made a decision, well, it was not a decision, but you said something in reference to where we are right now, being forced to make certain types of decisions. What are those decisions?
Well, I don't know that I can speak for you in that regard. I don't know enough about the local school district. What I do know is that, in terms of decision-making, what I'm hearing from constituency in the downtown is that, I'm hearing from good urbanites that they, you know, they decided to buy a condo in downtown, and after, you know, after two, three, four years, she gets pregnant, and they decide to leave downtown for what appears to be greener pastures, for better education, and I think that's an unfortunate phenomenon, and I think it's something that we need to course correct, and we can only do that by offering the best alternatives in, in our city versus encouraging people to move outside of the city to explore the education for their children.
Not to put you on the spot, but I'm sure you've done some personal brainstorming when you talked about, I don't know if you used the word partnerships, but collaborations or whatever the case. Just curious if, if any wild ideas maybe came to mind in your personal brainstorms? And I'm the wild idea guy, so that's mine.
From the guy who has a lot of personal brainstorms. Mr. Ross, obviously, we're going to be, we're going to be kindred spirits. You know, I, I think I am full of wild ideas, and at the risk of, of airing too many of them tonight in our first meeting.
Fair enough.
I, I do believe that the community has a responsibility to re, to reclaim their school district, and it's not just the individual decision about where your kids go to school. It's about ensuring that the school district as a whole creates a competitive advantage for you as a community, and that is one of the drivers of economic development, and I, I sharpened my teeth in this business in a city that, of great public education, and I knew the competitive advantage that it gave us and how we recruited firms from Boston, you know, from Pittsburgh, from the Northeast. We used them as examples because we had a great local school system, and that became a competitive advantage for us, and I hope that one day GRPS can be the same for Grand Rapids.
Questions?
Yeah, a quick comment. You know, I was at an event you were speaking at, I think it was a rapid growth discussion over on Division, and there was, there were some people in the audience who raised, or perhaps even on the panel, who raised that comment as if it was just an understood that there were problems in Grand Rapids Public Schools, and they shouldn't, and you were, I was, I was very happy that you stood up and challenged that perspective and, and talked about how Grand Rapids Public Schools was, was doing good work towards making it a good school district and asking people not to just base that on some faulty assumption, so I appreciate that.
Thank you, Dr. Baker. I, I'm happy to challenge that assumption, and, and to be honest with you, I'm thirsty to learn more about the school district, and what I keep hearing from individuals like yourself and from Dr. Fahl is that there are so many shining lights within the school district, and we just need to make sure that people understand what they are, because that decision shouldn't be so easy as, as quickly moving out of the city to explore education for their children, because there are great opportunities here.
Thanks.
Thank you for being here. Really appreciate you speaking tonight and your partnership. I think some great things are going to happen out of it.
Thank you very much. I look forward to the opportunity.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, thank you. We, at this time, we have two expressions of appreciation, and I am looking for representatives from student advancement.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not sure of the student advancement and, and our friends from Econ Club. I know Superintendent Neal had asked that I, she wanted to express publicly, under her superintendent's comments, her thanks and appreciation for, for really two groups. One, first and foremost, is the Grand Rapids Student Advancement Foundation, and I know that they will be scheduled to come back. They always come and give an annual report, but in light of the, the remarkable relationship that we have with the Student Advancement Foundation, I think, I know that Superintendent Neal felt very compelled to really make this almost a standing item, one that we need to honor and recognize our partnerships, one of the greatest of which is with the Student Advancement Foundation, and everything they do from the arts music to environmental science to the calculators to athletics and everything in between, and you certainly can't say thank you enough, and I know that we, as a district, need to do even more of that, and so this was just one of those kind of items that I know she was very intentional about adding that on there, and so we'll have more opportunity to say thank you and to express that thanks directly to Susan Hartwell and Lynn Effendulis and other members of the SAF, and we're looking to do additional items of what we can do to bring that, to tell more of the story and to really showcase that under celebrations or on the superintendent's report. On the other one, and it was just recently, and many of you, I think, were there, our superintendent had the honor of, of presenting to the Econ Club and in Forum, and these are two separate groups, two separate invitations, two originally scheduled separate events, that they ended up merging, so these two great organizations that had asked for, for Superintendent Neal to come, they came together and did one big event under the Econ Club. More than 600 people were in attendance, and our, our superintendent did a, just an outstanding job. She would tell you she was a little nervous, it didn't show, but it was one that certainly wanted to make the board aware, and for her, on her, on her behalf, again, to express her public thanks and appreciation to the Econ Club and to in Forum for that invitation, and I'm sure there'll be lots of other opportunities, but that, that was a great audience in front of many partners and a lot of friends, as well as a large number of individuals who do not know GRPS, who do not interact with GRPS, and may have perceptions, and so she was successful in really knocking, telling the story, as we always do, very transparently, of where we've been, where we are, and where we're going, as well as both the, the challenges academically and financially, as well as the success stories, because we have those success stories that many people in that audience have a tendency to really just be wowed by. They're like, wow, I didn't know you have the top-performing school in all of West Michigan, or the coolest school in America, it was Zoo School, and things like that, so those were the two points that she had intended, and I know she had intended to be here personally to do it, but as she asked me to fill in and pinch-hit today, and so again, our thanks to the Student Advancement Foundation, the Economic Club of Grand Rapids, and in Forum.
Thank you, John.
Thanks, John. President Fahl, you probably have noticed that we have lots of building leaders in our audience tonight. Our appointments have been in place for some time, however, we have not had the opportunity to introduce these marvelous individuals. So at this time, I'm going to ask that Dr. Maida Gunno will come forth. She is the Executive Director of Middle School Leadership, I should say the Dynamic Director of Middle School Leadership, and she is going to introduce our middle school principals, followed by Terracida Long, who is the Executive Director of Special Ed Services, who will introduce our special ed staff.
Good evening, President Fahl, Mrs. Evans, and board members. It is with great pleasure that I introduce you, to you tonight, our K-8 and middle school administrative teams, and as I call their names, I'd like them to stand. I'm going to call the schools and then their names and their roles. So first is Aberdeen, Lori Graff, principal. CA Frost Environmental Science Academy, Rick Knoll, principal. Bill Smith, school improvement facilitator. He's not able to be here tonight, but we're glad that he's on board with us. Harrison Park, well, Harrison Park, K-8, not elementary. Mike Nassar, principal. Katie Beebe, school improvement facilitator. Stephanie Vivalta, school improvement facilitator. Martin Luther King Leadership Academy. Tricia Mathis, principal. Paris McMurray, Dean of Students. Sherwood Park, Global Studies. Arnetta Thompson, principal. Clarence McCoy, school improvement facilitator. Clarence is at a family funeral. Southwest Community Campus, Carmen Fernandez, principal. Irma Lopez, school improvement facilitator. Alger Middle School, Rodney Brown, principal. Sam Mickens, Senior, Dean of Students. Rashawn McLanahan, Assistant Principal, and Pat Boji, SIG Coordinator. Burton Middle School, Dr. Stephen Beauclair, principal. Stacy Stout, Dean of Students. Eduardo Sanchez, Assistant Principal. Gerald R. Ford Middle School, Stephanie Davis, principal. Eric Taylor, Dean of Students. Bernard Q, SIG Coordinator. Riverside Middle School, Donna Bowman, principal. Aida Toledo, Dean of Students. And last, but certainly not least, Westwood Middle School, Dr. Arthur Gardner, Miguel Ortiz, Dr. Arthur Gardner is principal, Miguel Ortiz, Assistant Principal. So these are the exceptional people that I work with every day.
Well, if you'll bear with me, I thought this was a good opportunity to showcase our special ed programs and services, so I won't be quite as brief as my counterpart, Maida.
Never.
It is my pleasure to introduce to you our center program administrators first, so I'd like to start with Steve Kaidoo, and when I call your name, please stand. Steve is our principal at Lincoln School. This is Steve's 30th year with the district, 24 years teaching and supervising the POHI program, and the last six years at Lincoln School. Lincoln School is a center-based program with students from all 20 districts within Kent ISD. The students range from age 6 to 26, and they have moderate to severe cognitive impairments. And by the way, Steve likes to fish, mountain, bike, and hike.
Steve.
All right, next, we have Deb Mikeley. Deb Mikeley is our administrator at Pine Grove Learning Center. She's been with the district for 29 years in various positions, including as teacher consultant for five years, and has been an administrator in our center-based programs for the last seven. Pine Grove Learning Center is a sister school to Lincoln. It was built four years ago to service students from the southwest portion of Kent County as we had outgrown the Lincoln School facility. It's located on 52nd Street in Wyoming. You're invited to tour and visit this very special place. Deb loves spending time with her grandson, snowshoeing, biking, and reading. Lisa Merritt, she's the principal at the Lincoln Developmental Center. This is her 22nd year with the district. All but two of those years have been on the Lincoln campus, and it's her ninth year as principal. Lincoln Developmental Center houses programs for students with severe multiple impairments from all of Kent ISD, where the focus is to increase the student's level of independence in a functional academic environment. Lisa loves to read, bicycle, and spend time with her family. These are well-rounded people.
First, they are special ed.
Next, you have to be. Next, from our Lincoln campus, we have Antonette Moore. Antonette is our administrator at Kent Vocational Options, Community-Based Occupational Training. Toni moved to Michigan in 1997. She began subbing in the district. She landed a full-time job the following year. She's worked in several buildings, primarily at the Old Madison Elementary, and she's currently the administrator at KVO. KVO C-BOT is our center program for students that require vocational program. These are students with cognitive impairments and autism, age 17 to 26. It's on Lincoln campus, and we also have nine other sites around this city. Toni loves to spend time with her family. She brought two, her two daughters, ages eight and nine. They like going skating, traveling, and participating in ministry. Mary Kay Colber is our supervisor for our Grand Rapids Oral Deaf Program and Visually Impaired Services. She joined the Grodd at Shawnee 25 years ago, along with supervising the Along with supervising the oral deaf program, she oversees programs and services for students with visual impairments. The Oral Deaf Program is about listening, language and speech skills in children who are deaf or hard of hearing. Mary Kay likes to camp and travel with her grandkids. So now I would like to talk about our three Kenosha Center Principals and describe the program. Our Kenosha Center offers special education services to children birth through five to the 20 districts of the Kent ISD, and it's administered in three different school sites. The program is based on a seamless service delivery model, providing instructional services in classrooms, in homes and in the community by teachers and related service staff. First, we have Denise Ludwig, Principal at the Wellerwood Early Childhood Center. Denise has been with the GRPS for 22 years. That chokes me up. Seventeen as an Administrator, and she's been in seven different Kenosha sites. Denise enjoys reading everything and bicycling. Our next Principal from the Kenosha Centers is Denise McConnell Brown at Campus Early Childhood. She's been with the GRPS for 25 years. She was in the Detroit area prior to coming to GR. She and her husband have Harleys, and they love to ride and explore pure Michigan. Mary Koch is our Principal at our Van Aken site. She's been with GRPS since 1999. Her first year was at Lincoln School and Kenosha, and she's been at the Kenosha-Van Aken Birth to Five Program since then. She likes to travel, garden and eat. Healthy things, apparently. Joel Copely is our Principal at the Kent Education Center, Beltline High School. Joel has been in the district for five years. His first four years were at Ottawa Hills High School as a special education teacher and resource interventionist. He's been the Principal at KEC since October of 2011. KEC High School provides services to students ages 14 to 24 with severe emotional impairments from Kent ISD. We currently have about 120 students at our Beltline site. Joel likes to travel with his wife, and they bring along their four kids. Nick Jaskew, Principal at Oakley and Mayfield. This is Nick's second year as the Principal at Oakley and Mayfield. He trained as a school psychologist, and prior to coming to GRPS was employed by Kalamazoo RISA. Thought you would enjoy that, Maureen. Nick oversees the K-8 component of our KEC program for students with severe emotional impairments. Students are currently serviced in two sites, Oakley and Mayfield, that will merge as a K-8 as part of our district's transformation plan. Nick enjoys trail hiking, walking and sports in general, especially football. That is our cast of center program administrators. I'd like to now introduce to you our local program administrators. I'd like to start with Ann Zollner. Ann is our Principal at the Richmore and the West Leonard Early Childhood Centers. This is Ann's 37th year with GRPS. Her first three years were spent serving the district as a speech-language pathologist. And in 1979, she began in the Early Childhood Special Ed Program. She was our very first local early childhood special education teacher, and she taught for what was then called PPI, Pre-Primary Impaired, for eight years. Became its teacher consultant for 13 years, and she has been the supervisor and principal for this program and these sites for the last 16 years. The ECSE Program provides a variety of services and programs for our three-to-five-year-old students with IEPs. We align our curriculum with the Michigan Early Expectations along with the GRPS-GSRP Program, and the intent is to prepare these young kids for kindergarten. Ann loves to travel and is currently working on a full and adventurous bucket list. Maida Townsend is one of our elementary special education supervisors. Maida has been with the district for 31 years. She started teaching students with cognitive impairments at Aberdeen, then she moved to KEC Mayfield, and then was at Westwood Middle School for several years. She became a teacher consultant and then moved into Special Education Administration for a bit of time. Due to her young family, she returned to the classroom and she taught at Campus Elementary for five years. Maida has been in her current position for three years. We're glad she's back. She enjoys traveling, writing. She's published four books and articles for local papers and reading. Maida's counterpart is Sarah Long. She oversees our elementary programs on the south side of the city. This is Sarah, seventh year with the district. She's worked as a speech-language pathologist at the Kenosha Diagnostic Center, Cesar E. Chavez Elementary and the Bilingual Diagnostic Team. And currently, she is the Supervisor of programs at the elementary level, along with supervising the bilingual diagnostic team. Sarah's fluent in Spanish, and she enjoys going to the gym, visiting local yoga studios, dining out and playing the drums. Our next Administrator is Carla Bart. Carla oversees our programs for K-8 and middle schools. Carla has been with the district for 33 years. She started as an LD, Learning Disabilities Teacher at Stacking, then moved to Harrison Park. She then moved to KEC Beltline as teacher and principal currently. And lastly, she is our Special Ed Supervisor for the K-8 Middle Schools. Carla loves to spend time with her almost seven grandchildren, practice yoga, hunt, fish, kayak, bike, boat, and being up north. Carla will be retiring after many successful years with GRPS in June. We wish her the best. She is joined tonight by her husband, Gary. Laura Ochoa is our Supervisor for Alternative Programs and Curriculum. Laura has been with GRPS for 14 years, nine years as a teacher and the last five as an administrator. She loves to travel. Two summers ago, she and her husband spent time in Haiti, Dominican Republic and Bahamas on a mission trip. She enjoys movies, writing and spending time with her seven grandchildren, who are all boys. Paulette Longwell, Special Ed Supervisor for our programs for Autism Spectrum Disorder and programs for the moderately cognitively impaired. She has been with the GRPS for 24 years. Our autism programs sites include Dickinson, Sibley, Aberdeen and North Park for the elementary, as well as Riverside and Creston for secondary. Our MOSEI programs are located at Coates for elementary, MLK, CA Frost and Creston for secondary. Paulette loves to row in a shell on the Grand River with eight rowers, and she also loves to ballroom dance. Gary Walsh is our high school special education supervisor, and he could not be here this evening due to a family obligation. So you'll have to learn about him another time. And then finally, we have Jim Palasic. Jim Palasic is our Compliance Coordinator. Jim has been with the district for 16 years in a variety of roles, including Special Ed Teacher, Middle School and Elementary Schools, Principal and Special Ed Supervisor. This is his first year as our Special Ed Compliance Coordinator. In this role, he ensures that our district's programs and services for students with IEPs are in full compliance with the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act and the Michigan Administrative Rules for Special Education. Jim loves to relax by enjoying nature, and he plays a mean round of golf. Please, please give a round of applause to our very, very dedicated GRPS Special Ed
Thank you. Thank you, Terracita and Maida. The number of years I heard, and Maida didn't mention them, but it's very impressive and my gratitude, our gratitude for all the leadership you've had in the district. Anything else? No? All right. That would be all. All right, we have two action items. Do I have a motion to approve Policy 1170 for a second reading?
Motion to approve the second reading of Policy 1170.
Support for that?
Support.
Any discussion?
Who's support?
Monica?
Yeah, well, I just, one piece on page six of the document, let me see, it should be, that page six, the second paragraph, this is probably something we need to word, Smith. It reads that the appointment should hold office until December 31st of the year of the appointment. And obviously, if someone was appointed with our election, changing election cycles, I don't know if that will hold true. There won't be an election every year, will there? I don't think.
That's true.
So I guess what I'm getting at?
Right. Unless we have a special election, and I don't think we do, right? So you're appointed until the next opportunity, hold an election for that office?
Exactly. So I don't know, just my attempt at word, Smith, was the appointment should hold office until December 31st of the year. That includes the next school board election.
Right. So do we want a motion to make that change? So moved.
It's part.
Any spark for that? Any discussion regarding that? Motion that's on the floor? There's none?
The purpose of this is just to update it because of the change in terms.
That's correct.
So we just obviously need to make sure accurately flex that.
That's correct. There's no other discussion? You can call the roll, Mr. Ross.
Moody?
Yes.
O'Connor?
Yes.
Randalls?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Slate?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
LaGrane?
Yes.
President Faal?
Yes.
Motion carries eight zero.
Next item is Policy 1180. Do I have a motion to approve a second reading of Policy 1180?
Motion to approve the second reading of Policy 1180.
You have support for that?
Support.
Yes, we have, just because I think that this might represent some changes for the public, what the major changes are, because this isn't just changed because of the changes in terms. So, John, did you?
Yeah, Mr. O'Connor.
This is the, Board Policy 1180 relates to the establishment of board committees. Last year, summertime sometime, we decided to embark upon an experiment to, we typically have three standing committees, to have two standing committees, finance, obviously. And what used to be the Education Committee will now be called the Academic Achievement Committee. Both policies will now have a focus, not only on their traditional roles, focusing on education and finance, but looking at the legislative and policy implications that relate to the, those two topics at hand. And then we will be eliminating the Executive Committee for the Board, as we never really called the Executive Committee. We felt it was better to have either committee of the whole or the work be done in the two standing committees.
Thank you. And thank you for your work on the policy. Any other questions or discussion before we take the vote? Mr. Ross?
Moody?
Yes.
O'Connor?
Yes.
Randalls?
Yes.
Yes, Slate?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
LaGrane?
Yes.
President Faal?
Yes.
Motion carries eight zero.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is the Consent Agenda Grouping. Do I have a motion to approve that?
Motion to approve the Consent Agenda less the business item administrative appointment.
Okay. Support for that?
Support.
All right, now call the roll.
Moody?
Yes.
O'Connor?
Yes.
Randalls?
Yes.
Ross, yes.
Slate?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
LaGrane?
Yes.
Faal?
Yes.
Motion carries eight zero.
Now we need a motion to approve the administrative appointment.
Motion to approve the administrative appointment.
Support.
Discussion?
Madam President, if I could just ask for some, maybe for the public, some explanation about this position, who she is, what this entails and what might become of that?
We have three individuals here.
Yes.
Explain to that question.
Good evening.
Good evening.
This position will be, if approved, will be the Executive Director for Human Resources and Legal Services for the District. Sharon Pitts is our candidate, and she is originally from the Detroit area. She is a graduate of University of Michigan, which I won't hold against her. She's also a graduate of Wayne State University of Law in Detroit. She is a licensed practicing attorney in four states, Florida, Georgia, Illinois and Michigan. For the last 16 years, she's served as the Chief Legal Advisor and Chief of Staff for Atlanta Public Schools in Georgia. She's assisted the Superintendent, Cabinet and Human Resources there. And all of us here in GRPS, the Superintendent included, Cabinet Level Members, Human Resources Department are very excited at the potential of having Sharon join our team.
Any further questions?
Any other questions?
Yeah. The hope here is to take some of the legal work that we've been contracting out and have this happen in-house.
Exactly. While it won't eliminate that budget altogether, it is the goal to reduce the legal services that we're using external firms.
Okay. Well, then there are three questions, obviously. First is, we're primarily using Clark Hill, right? That's where the bulk of our legal billing's been going in the past?
We have probably three to four firms that we're using for various reasons. For example, we use Varnum for a lot of our bond work. We do, right now, we're currently using Clark Hill for a lot of labor relations negotiations. So that would be probably the major.
You're not intending to have Varnum stop doing the bond work, I'm assuming?
No. So that's what I meant by I said we would still have some of those.
So what rate are we paying Clark Hill right now?
It would depend on the attorney that we are using.
Okay, what's the weighted average?
I don't have that off the top of my head, so I could certainly give that to.
$300 an hour, $200 an hour? I mean, it's not $50 bucks an hour, right?
No, it's probably somewhere between $200 and $300 an hour.
Okay, so if it's about $250 an hour, about, are we allowed to talk about salaries? This is a public meeting and it's a public employee, right? What's the proposed salary here?
It's $115.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
$115.
Okay. So our break-even point on this is if we displace, what, 500 billable hours? Okay. And so it's your expectation we'll at least be able to get that kind of return on moving the work in-house?
Absolutely.
Okay, good. Thanks.
Dr. Baker?
Yeah, actually, maybe this also helps. But this is, but this isn't just, I mean, in a way, this is, this is a different position than we've had before, at least relative, but it's not. But it sounds like some of the responsibilities would also, she's also, would be working in HR as well. I mean, working, so the position, what is the position title again, Executive Director?
Executive Director of Human Resources and Legal Services.
And Legal Services, okay. So she would have some responsibilities that past personnel have had, as well as that. Okay, so, it's like services. Okay, so another benefit is that we have someone in legal services, I mean, someone with a legal background in-house, working with our HR instead of, okay, so.
And we will transition her into being the Lead Counsel for Negotiations.
Okay. Thanks.
And she will provide a role in assisting the Board of Education in development of policy procedure.
Absolutely.
Excellent. I have one question.
Experience then in negotiations and labor?
She, yes, in Atlanta and in Chicago.
Was that her major role?
She did kind of everything. She was Chief Counsel, so she did arbitrations, any litigation. She's done private practice as well. So she's pretty well-rounded.
I checked her out online. She had, she had an Atlanta Public School. She was head of the department, and they had six or seven lawyers on staff at Atlanta Public Schools.
And she was on staff?
She was the head of the staff.
Okay. Okay. Is she moving here?
Yes, she is.
Why?
I asked her that too, Maureen. I did ask her that, and she has family here, so she's, she's excited to come home.
That's good.
She's excited to come back to Michigan.
I asked the question. Everybody out there was thinking.
We asked her too, more than once.
Any further questions? We call the roll? Call the vote.
Moody? Yes.
O'Connor?
Absolutely.
Randalls?
Yes.
Ross, yes.
Slate?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
LaGrane?
Yes.
President Faal?
Yes.
Motion carries eight zero.
Thank you. Fantastic. Discussion items, we have none. We are to the public comment portion. We have one card. Is that it?
Louise Wilson.
Ms. Wilson, yes.
Yes, Paul's not here, so the short black people are underrepresented, so I stepped in.
Ms. Wilson, I'm.
And the excellent teacher, so.
Hello. I'm Louise Wilson. For the last few years, I've been privileged to sit on the Instructional Council for the District. Last year, I chaired the council and was the beneficiary of tutelage from Pat Boji, who had chaired the committee for several years prior. The Instructional Council is supposed to be a meeting place where administration and teachers can come together to discuss and concur on academic requirements for the District. Changes in curriculum, courses and materials such as textbooks are supposed to come before this committee, so that. so that teachers can have input to the academics of the district as suggested in the Cambridge Report. When Mrs. Neal was appointed last year, Mrs. Poggi invited her to visit the Instructional Council during her first month. When Mrs. Neal came, she purported to be surprised that the council was essentially a toothless entity that meets but has no real input to the academic activity in the district. She agreed to meet with Mrs. Poggi and I to resolve this issue. We are still waiting for that meeting despite repeated requests. The Cambridge Report indicates that there is a curriculum in place, but it must be implemented with fidelity. A recent survey of teachers finds that over half the teachers have no curriculum for at least part of the time that they teach. For those with curriculum, it has been changed for about half since they were assigned to their teaching this year, and that for three-quarters of the staff, the materials and supplies that they have been given do not meet the requirements of the curriculum they are assigned. The Head of Academics in GRPS recently stated that curriculum is changed as we go along. It is not being changed through the Instructional Council, but from the top down. The Cambridge Report notes that most of the administrative staff who are making these changes do not have sufficient teaching experience to create curriculum. There is no discussion of change and no input from teachers. In most cases across the curriculum, courses supported by the Instructional Council have been given a name and a course number, and the curriculum has then been completely changed by the administration within the district. There is no examination for cohesion, for quality, or for quantity, and there is no time for teachers to plan their lessons or delivery. The piecemeal and whimsical attitude to academics has not changed in the district. Moreover, you, as a board, are agreeing to institute and implement courses in the district which have no curriculum. And after you have approved them, they are changed by administration in the district without regard to implementability or cohesive planning. I am asking you, since you are a new board, and it is now January, to please check that all the courses of study that you approve are academically strong and integrated, that all the materials, time to photocopy materials, district assessments, and planning time are available to teachers, and that courses do not change after June. Teachers generally spend the summer planning how they will present their material in the following year. Changing their curriculum after they've spent this time planning is an insult to their professional integrity. Teachers also need to know before the summer what they will be teaching. We understand there may be sometimes, there may sometimes need to be a few changes, but to have no teachers know what they are doing in any of their courses, and to move teachers without regard to their prior teaching experiences, specialized education, or professional development, seems to be completely without respect to teachers and their skills. The Cambridge Report indicates that the district curriculum is not being implemented with fidelity. I would argue that it is not possible to implement anything with fidelity if it is not implementable due to poor planning, revolving changes, and lack of materials. These difficulties inculcate a lack of respect for any curriculum throughout the district. If you want teachers to be faithful to a curriculum, the administration must also be faithful to a curriculum. It must be an implementable curriculum, and teachers must be supported in implementing it, not be expected to create pure gold when delivered led by the administration. A true partnership in developing curriculum before June would be an excellent start. I note that several districts around us have achieved academic turnaround with the free support available from Kent ISD, who have assisted them in ensuring integrity of the curriculum and in monitoring its implementation. I suggest that the board look into this resource, which we are already paying for as taxpayers, but we're not using. Thank you very much.
Anyone else for public comment? There being none? Ms. Evans?
I have none, but thank you for having me.
Thank you for filling in. Mr. Ross?
I guess I just want to give a special thanks to all the hard-working, you know, frontline folks out here, really. It's sometimes a thankless job, but whatever it's worth, God, we appreciate you, in all sincerity, really.
Dr. Baker?
Just a couple of things. One is, is I noticed that there is no chair in the middle of the, of the, so I think that that's a nice, it's a nice message that we're not afraid of the people who come to visit us, and that's very nice. And also, it's nice that, I appreciate your new role as President.
Pastor Moody?
None at this time.
Slate?
I just want to be very, very thankful for all of your very hard work in looking at K-8 and middle school principals who do some of the hardest work of anybody at all, and of course, to my special ed crowd out there, many of whom I know. And continued good work, thank you so much.
Dr. Brandles?
No comment?
No comment?
No.
Okay, none for me either. This meeting's adjourned.